Excuse me. Everyone ready? Thank you. We got a few more people just straggling in, but if they could take a seat as soon as they get here, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. We do have a quorum present of seventy-five persons. And I appreciate you all turning out for this important issue on this rainy night. Good thing we got the rain, though, right? The grass needed it? Not really. All right. Quorum being present, the meeting will come to order. As is our tradition, let's all stand and face the American flag, and we will say the Pledge of Allegiance, please, for those that can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. We decided to go in the gymnasium today because we thought we might exceed the capacity in the auditorium, and I think that ended up being a wise decision. Glad to see a lot of people here. We have a very important meeting for our September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three Bolton special town meeting. The warrant having been posted by our bylaws, we will commence. I'm gonna introduce some folks, and then I'm gonna go over a few procedural issues. All right? I'm Doug Story, your moderator. To my right is Pam Powell, our town clerk. And then over here, on my right, we've got the Select Board, Bob Sikansky, Brian Boyle, and Stan Wysocki. We've got our Advisory Committee, Don Cole, Craig Lauer, William Nichols, and Robert Guerrero. On the far table, we have our town council, Bob Gidson of American O'Connell, and our town administrator, Don Low. Over here, on my left, we have all the members of the Building Committee, School Building Committee and School Committee, and then a few other persons. We have Amy Cohen from the School Committee, Mike Horish from the School Committee, Amy Vessels from the School Committee, Stacy Dupuy and David Yezway from the Building Committee. And then we have two non-residents that are here to offer their expertise if we need to ask them questions. Ross McCulkeren, the NRSD Business and Operations Manager, and the guy who makes sure the lights and the AC and everything is working right here. And Craig Olson, the architect from Kessel, Booz Associates. Is that good? Thank you very much. I have a question. How many of you have ever been to a town meeting before? Everyone? So we don't need any review of the procedures? Well, I'm gonna do it anyway. So normally, in Bolton, we go by a voice vote first, and we do our votes by a or nay. Today, we're gonna use these, and we've actually found in the last couple of meetings, these are really fabulous. These are remote counting devices. They are very simple. They have a yes button and a no button. And they have a number on the back. And the number's important so that when you do vote, and we show the results, and it lights up, you can see that your vote was counted, okay? And if anyone doesn't see that and thinks there's a problem with their device, let us know. We'll get a battery, or we'll change it. But we've had really good luck with these. They work very well. One thing you may need to do after a period of presentation that's gone on for a while, and when we get to a vote, is wake up your device. And all you do is hit a button on it. And you'll see that it lights up again, okay? Because they do go to sleep. We do have a main motion today on Article Two, which is the school article, that I'm gonna read in its entirety. It's very wordy. It's exactly what the state has required us to use for the wording. It's the same wording that's gonna be used in all three towns, and it needs to be passed by all three towns as worded for this to go through. So that's why I'm gonna read it to you, and if anyone has questions or wants to understand or make sure they understand the main motion, we will take the time to do that. We do have a presentation by the Building Committee here, which will last approximately ten, twelve minutes. There'll be a presentation here first, and then there's some vocal presentation as well. And then we'll get into public discussion on the articles. There are three articles today. The school is the second article. We'll do the first one, which is some spending, and then at the end, we have an article to authorize the election. All three of those we'll do with the remote devices. The final motion will be to adjourn the meeting. We'll do that by voice vote. I think that'll work. Any registered voter can speak. We have two microphones. They're spread out, so you come down those aisles. Nothing in the middle, because you'd be kinda blocking the presentation. So those that do wanna speak, please come up to the microphone, queue up, get ready ahead of time. We don't recognize speaking from the floor or from your seats unless you are unable to get to the microphone. If you're unable to get there, please hold up your hand. And if I don't see it, hopefully someone else will. We'll be looking, you know, because I'm scanning the room, but be patient. We're gonna let everyone speak who wants to speak tonight with a two-minute limit on your speaking, and I have a little timer here, so when we get to thirty seconds, I might do something like this. And the reason for that is we have over five hundred people here. We'd like to let anyone who wants to speak, speak. And, you know, it's not fair for any one person to monopolize that. And again, I will let everyone speak before we let people come back a second time. So that's just in the interest of fairness, okay? And hopefully, we are sticking to sharing relevant information, new topics. Address your comments to me, the moderator, and I will in turn ask Amy or one of our boards who would like to answer that question. But you address your questions to me, not to any of the people up here. And of course, we don't do anything... We've got a really great, great history of decorum in our town meetings, and I appreciate that, and I thank you all. And we'll stick to that. You know, we don't call names, we don't attack a person. That's just not allowable. You're asking a question about the issue, and you certainly can present your point of view. If anyone has it, please mute your cellphone. And so now, just to give us all a chance to try out these devices, if you haven't tried them yet, we're gonna do a couple of sample questions. And I'm gonna turn some lights off. I should've noted one other thing. I hope everyone has seen, we got exit doors, and two on this side, one over here, one over here, so there's a lot of exit doors if anyone needed to exit the building. All right. So what you can see here is a grid showing... Is this showing everyone? No, I know, but do we end it up with five hundred or more? Anyone know? We'll find out. Because we can only fit five hundred a page. And Bolton has five hundred of these. We actually borrowed five hundred from Harvard and reprogrammed them to our system, so they're all programmed for tonight. So you'll look up there and see your number, and when we ask a question, what I will do is I will say, "I'm now gonna open the voting." And when I open the voting, you can select green yes, red no. And as soon as you select it, your number will light up. And I'll just tell you, you can change your vote until I close the voting. So if thirty seconds later, you change your mind, you can do that, okay? Can we have the first sample question? We do have over five hundred, so we're gonna go to a second screen. All right, we're gonna open a vote. Is the number on the back of your device an even number? You see how quickly that works? Pretty cool. Now, we do want everyone to vote here, please. You don't have to vote. You do not have to vote, but we... And what I will always do is look at the screen and see if I see any that aren't filled out yet, and I'll wait, and I'll wait. And then eventually, I'll say, "Has everyone voted that wants to vote? Is there anyone that needs any more time?" And if you do, you can hold your hand up, and we'll wait. Not seeing anyone holding their hand up, we're gonna close the vote. And once it's closed, you cannot change your vote. So a couple people didn't vote. And the results? Close the vote. And it's gonna show us the number of yeses and nos. Now, the votes that we have today, the first one is a nine tenths, which means we need ninety percent, and it will calculate that. Article Two is a simple majority, so one more than half, it passes. All right? Do we wanna do another one? No? Okay. Everybody good? I'm fine with that, if you're fine with that. All right. Let's move on. Okay. So as I said, we have three articles tonight. The first article is unpaid bills for the previous fiscal years, Article One. What is your pleasure?
Article... Move the article.
Move the article? Has it been seconded?
Second.
All right. The article's been moved and seconded. This is to pay three unpaid bills that you can see up there. Select Board, approve this, three zero. Advisory Committee, four zero. So we need ninety percent. Is there any discussion on this article? Seeing none, I will open the vote. You can now select yes or no to approve the unpaid bills. Does anyone need any more time on this article? Seeing none, let's close the vote, please. I'm pretty good at math. That's ninety percent. Thank you. That passes. Article Two. Neshoba Regional School District, school building... Project. This is the summary. I know this is why everyone's here. We're here to discuss and then vote either in favor of or against committing the town to funding for a new school. Okay? It's really that simple. But even though it's that simple, I'm gonna read you this motion, which is very wordy. Can we go to the motion slide? Oh, okay. No, right there. All right. And we can go back if anyone wants to see those again. The motion is that the town hereby approves the two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fourteen... Two-hundred-and-forty-one million! That was a joke! Seven-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand... I'll start again. borrowing authorized by the Neshoba Regional School District for the purpose of paying costs for a new Neshoba Regional High School, Twelve Green Road, Bolton, Mass., zero-one-seven-four-zero, including site work and athletic fields, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, parentheses, "The project." Which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren of at least fifty years, and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, parentheses, MSBA... You'll hear that again. ...set amount to be expended to the direction of the Neshoba Regional School District's Project School Building Committee, that the town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities, provided further that any grant that district may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of one, parentheses, fifty-five and nine one-hundredths percent, fifty-five-point-oh-nine percent, of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or two, parentheses, "The total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that the approval of the district's borrowing by this vote shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt its allocable share of the amounts required for the payment of the interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by MGL fifty-nine, section twenty-one C, parentheses, Proposition Two and a Half, and that amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. What is your pleasure on that motion?
So moved.
Articles moved?
Second.
And seconded. The article has been moved and seconded. I know that's a lot. You're gonna have plenty of time to ask questions about what we just read there. So let's, without further ado, let's go to the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Amy Cohen, and I am the co-Vice Chairperson of the Neshoba Regional High School Building Committee and the Vice Chairperson of the Neshoba Regional School Committee. It is my true honor to represent both these committees tonight. I'd like to introduce the members of the School Building Committee who are here with me tonight at tonight's meeting in support of Article Two, although now I realize you probably can't see them. We have Mr. Don Low, our town administrator, Mr. Ross Mulcarren, Director of Finance and Operations at NRSD, Mr. Craig Olson, representing the project architect, Castle Booze and Associates, Voting Member Mr. Bob Sikansky, an elected member of our Select Board, who also served on the Space Study Task Force from two thousand thirteen to two thousand sixteen, and who chaired the OPM Selection, CM@Risk Selection Subcommittee. Voting Member Mr. David Yezaway, a commercial real estate banker, and Mr. Joe McCarthy, Fine and Performing Arts Department Head and Band Director at NRHS. We're also joined by Mr. Mike Horish and Amy Vessels of the School Committee. And together, the voting members of both committees here tonight are your neighbors, fellow parents, property owners, taxpayers, who have worked tirelessly on this project. And I'd like to thank them for their time, energy, and dedication. On their behalf, I thank you all for taking part in what we believe is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to bring a new state-of-the-art high school to the Neshoba Regional School District. The vote to incur debt for a new high school was unanimous by all eleven members of the School Committee and the fourteen voting members of the Building Committee. The article before you tonight serves as the result of a decade-long endeavor to bring improved access to educational resources for all children of the Neshoba Regional School District, and to ensure that we meet the accreditation standards set by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, which is the accrediting authority for the Neshoba Regional School District. Please take a look now at what has brought us here, what is possible, and how we bring a new Neshoba Regional High School to fruition through the following short video.
Today marks a pivotal moment that will shape the future of education in Bolton, Lancaster, and Stowe. We stand at a crossroads facing critical decisions that concern the future of high school education for the residents of our towns. These decisions hinge on our aging school building and the incredible opportunities that await us. Neshoba Regional High School opened its doors in nineteen sixty-one. Back then, our world was centered around industrial production, and our educational system was tailored to prepare students for jobs of that era. However, the world has transformed significantly since then. We now live in a rapidly evolving digital age driven by technology and sustainability. The dramatic advancement of technology over decades has coincided with the deterioration of our existing facility. It lacks compliance with building codes, energy conservation codes, and structural standards. Handicap accessibility is subpar, and our building systems are outdated and inefficient. The building envelope, including windows, walls, and the roof, is in dire need of attention. Our classrooms are undersized, and the educational spaces struggle to meet modern standards. Acoustic issues persist, and there's a lack of collaborative learning spaces within the school. A new Neshoba Regional High School presents a unique opportunity to adapt to these modern needs. It will be purposely designed to prepare our students for leadership roles in technology, sustainability, artificial intelligence, and beyond. This cutting-edge institution will foster innovation, collaboration, and creativity, nurturing the essential skills our students require for success in the twenty-first century. The NEAS standards for accreditation emphasize the importance of school buildings and facilities that ensure safety, support diversity, and comply with federal and state laws. Our school district must address these issues with both short-term and long-term plans for capital and maintenance needs. Taking action now will ensure we meet accreditation standards in the future. In two thousand eighteen, the Neshoba Regional School Committee voted to engage with the Massachusetts School Building Authority to address the issues with our aging building. Despite initial rejection, our determination led to acceptance into the feasibility consideration period. In two thousand twenty, our town supported a one-point-five-million-dollar warrant for feasibility. Several options for addressing our school's issues were presented to the community during feasibility. The first option, a base repair, was considered, but it was determined that the MSBA would not participate in this option, leaving taxpayers responsible for the full estimated cost of one-hundred-ten to one-hundred-twenty million dollars to address all the building's issues. This option would only repair the current issues without any improvements to the existing building. The next option, renovation, was deemed impractical due to structural limitations. The steel and concrete structure wouldn't allow for necessary improvements that meet the education plan developed in feasibility. Additionally, the building's design with concrete window casings and support beams made correcting these issues unfeasible without demolishing and rebuilding the entire structure. A third option, addition renovation, was considered but posed challenges. It would significantly impact the learning environment, requiring students to remain in the building during construction. Modular classrooms for short-term leases would be necessary, and the project timeline would extend to approximately eight years with an estimated cost of two-hundred-two to two-hundred-twelve million dollars to taxpayers. The fourth and preferred option was the construction of entirely new building with five variations explored, community feedback, and the School Building Committee's recommendation aligned with option four D for new construction. This option was estimated to cost around two-hundred-twenty-three to two-hundred-thirty-three million dollars, with a total taxpayer cost of one-hundred-seventy-five to one-hundred-eighty-five million dollars. At the conclusion of feasibility, it was estimated that a new building would cost two-hundred-and-forty-one-million-seven-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-four-hundred-fifty-one dollars. On August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, the MSBA approved a facilities grant of six-four million-seven-hundred-ninety-three-thousand-four-hundred-fifty-one dollars, leaving the estimated taxpayer share of no more than one-hundred-seventy-six-million-nine-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-four-hundred-seventy-five dollars. According to the regional agreement, the three towns will share the incurred debt based on their residence attendance at Neshoba Regional High School. As of October first, two thousand twenty-two, the shares for each town are as follows: Bolton, thirty-one-point-eight-seven percent; Lancaster, thirty-two-point-nine-seven percent; and Stowe, thirty-five-point-one-six percent. We understand that cost considerations are of utmost importance, and it is our responsibility to be transparent about the potential impact on our residents. to be transparent about the potential impact on our residents. Let's take a closer look at the median residential assessments in our town as they play a crucial role in understanding how the potential costs of our projects translate into manageable figures for our residents. In Bolton, the median residential assessment stands at seven hundred twelve thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars. For Bolton residents, the impact in property assessments will range from approximately one thousand five hundred fifty to one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars per year. Turning our attention to Lancaster, where the median residential assessment is four hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred nine dollars, residents here may anticipate an annual increase of approximately one thousand one hundred fifty dollars to one thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Lastly, in the town of Stowe, where the median residential assessment stands at six hundred forty thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars, residents can expect an annual increase of one thousand three hundred to one thousand five hundred dollars per year. These figures are meant to provide a clear picture of the potential impact on your household budgets. We acknowledge that decisions of this magnitude carry significant weight, but it's essential to keep in mind the long-term benefits that a new school will bring to our students and communities. In conclusion, I urge you to consider the tremendous value that this investment in education will bring to our towns. It's not merely about the numbers, it's about securing a brighter future for our children and the continued prosperity of our communities.
Thank you. Now I'm going to hand it off to Ross Mulcarren, Director of Finance and Operations at NRSD.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to be part of the presentation this evening. If there's a chance we could move forward one slide, thank you very much. On the screen is just a repeat of what you saw in the presentation that was put together by Superintendent Downing and other members of our administrative team. In our work with our financial advisors and the bond advisory group that we put together, we've created a model with an assumption of a thirty-year term, a four-to-four-and-a-half percent interest rate, to better understand the estimated tax impact for our member towns. Based on the median residential assessment, the estimated increase for a home at that value of seven hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars in Bolton would result in an estimated tax increase of approximately one thousand five hundred fifty to one thousand seven hundred and fifty per year. While this model was the basis of estimates provided to finance committees, select boards, and the public, the bonding approach and figures will be finalized based on market conditions at the time of bonding when we get to that point if we move forward. Thank you.
In closing, I'd like to say that the Neshoba Regional High School has served us well, and it has been well-maintained, but it is beyond its intended lifespan. The feasibility study commissioned and paid for by the taxpayers of the Neshoba Regional School District concluded that the most fiscally and educationally responsible choice is new construction. As we proceed to deliberations, we ask that you keep in mind that should the voters vote this down this article, we will not only be losing an opportunity to bring a new Neshoba Regional High School to the district, but we will lose the opportunity to receive a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority to reimburse the feasibility study and offset a quarter of the cost of this project. If this article fails, residents can expect piecemeal, annual, unsubsidized requests from the Neshoba Regional School District for funding of capital improvements at the high school for such things as a new roof, a new heating and ventilation system, new windows and doors, just to start. And after spending millions of dollars on these repairs, we will still be left with a building that doesn't meet our educational plan or the accreditation standards. We acknowledge that the cost of this new facility is significant. We understand that it's a lot to ask, but we also understand that the time to act is now. A new Neshoba Regional High School will act as a community hub that will allow for the building to be used for enriching cultural experiences for residents of all ages. It will ensure that Bolton remains an attractive place to live, work, and raise a family. We urge you to vote yes tonight and at the ballot box on September twenty-fifth from twelve to eight P.M. This will be an investment in the well-being and success of our children and the prosperity of our community. Thank you for your attention, and I yield back to the moderator.
Thank you very much, Amy, and thanks for the presentation. Now, I'd like to open it up to comments. We have two microphones at the front. If you want to queue up, anyone who would like to ask a question, make a comment, if there are none. Dave?
Dave Bosley, eighty-seven Laurel Road in Bolton. First of all, I would like to thank all the participants who put forward a lot of the materials, in particular, for instance, the video that was presented on meeting number eight, is I think what it's called. I thought that that was very informative, so thank you for all the hard work. I think some of you guys have been at it about ten years, so much appreciated. One question that I do have, because we've had some issues with prior projects, there was a question in that meeting that asked what would be the budget impact of this new building? And the response was really focusing on, let's call it, the utilities, not so much will there be increases in educational expenditures, additional teachers, aides, et cetera, that will have a budget impact on us. Mr. Moderator, if you could guide me in that regards, I'd be appreciated.
Excuse me?
If you could advise me in terms of will there be additional, let's call it, educational-related expenses as a result of the new building?
Okay, thank you, David. And I did forget to mention, of course you knew, when you do come to speak, please introduce yourself and tell us where you live. Thank you. Amy, would you like to address that?
Sure, I'm going to hand that off to Mr. Mulcarren.
Thank you for the question. There are no plans to increase the teaching size of staff or instructional assistants in a new Neshoba Regional High School.
Natalie McKnight, Pine Wood Road. I'm wondering if you could translate the tax increase based on the median that was in the chart to a percentage that we could apply to our own tax bills, so we could get a better idea of what the impact is? And also, is it possible to extend the payment of the school over another decade to ease the burden on the taxpayers?
The question is, is there a way for, we have the median assessment, and we have the value per the median, which was fifteen hundred and fifty to seventeen hundred and fifty, that's if your house is worth exactly seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So the question is, is there any way to extrapolate that to different values of a home, I guess in terms of tax rate?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to give this to Mr. Mulcarren.
Yep. So using, again, figures provided to us by our financial advisors in looking at the models, so for Bolton, those estimates per one thousand are approximately two dollars and eighteen cents to two dollars and forty-six cents per thousand. But again, I want to just caution and urge, nothing's finalized for borrowing as of yet.
Sure.
In regards to the staffing that would not be increased, it sounded like from the little bit that I read about the project is that we're going to be addressing future needs of students so that they can make their way into the world, you know, AI was mentioned. Does that, can the teachers we have now teach that? Or will there be a turnover of teachers to address these new fields? And just, has that been accounted for?
Thank you. Amy?
I defer to Mr. Mulcarren.
So if you look within the published educational plan for the new high school, while those things, we want those to be addressed, we expect that we would work with our staffing at the time to learn new technology, new instructional methods, whatever it may be, to utilize this building to its fullest extent to teach and instruct our students that would be in front of us.
Over here, please.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Rof Chen from Von Hill. Thanks, everybody, for your hard work. We really appreciate it. I'm sure it was countless hours over a long time. I was just looking at the information and listening to the presentation, and I noticed that you were talking about borrowing at four and a quarter percent, and I was wondering, I think a lot of borrowing is more around seven percent right now, maybe higher? And I was wondering, where are we going to be borrowing at four and a quarter percent? And is that something that's locked in? Or are we going to be getting into higher interest rates that seem to be the norm right now?
Thank you. Question is about interest rates on the borrowing amount. Amy?
Yeah, I just want to say that there has been a bond advisory committee that has been formed to investigate the best borrowing strategies, and I'm going to let Mr. Mulcarren add to that.
Yeah, the model that we built was based off of a four-to-four and a half percent interest rate, and we've been working with our financial advisors on different levels of what that would look like. We've had these numbers out for approximately a month now, and we continue to present those. The municipal bonding market is different than residential mortgage markets, so we felt and still feel today that four-to-four and a half percent would be the model that we use. We're, again, presenting a thirty-year term with a single borrow. Our bonding advisory group does not believe that that will end up ultimately being the best strategy, because if we take on a different strategy, we would be able to incrementally increase the tax assessment to our member towns without having it all show up all at once. Again, we built a model off of a one-time borrow. At this time, we don't feel like that's our goal. However, that's what we built in presenting this information that's been out for about approximately a month now.
Microphone on my left.
Sarah Marks, Still River Road. I just had a question. I saw that the assessments to the town are based on the percentage of people at the high school per town, and I think that will change over time. I didn't know if this was a percentage that is set then for the thirty-year course or whether this is reassessed every year? And if there is a reassessment every year, is there an amortization chart or something that can show us the projected costs per town based on the anticipated rate of attendance in the high school from each town? And my other question is, if there is a problem, I mean, is there any sort of Jordan Subroli liability between the towns with respect to the overall bond? And those are my questions. Thank you.
Did you get that?
I got the first part.
So if the assessment changes per the towns, does that change the amount that the town owes? Was, is that fair?
Yeah, because it looked like it was based on a percentage of the folks, you know, kids from each of the three towns, and I didn't know if that percentage is set for the life of the bond or whether or not, based on current enrollment, year over year, that's a reassessment and then we'll reapportion the tax liability per town each year.
Thank you.
So to answer the first part of your question, the assessments will be based on enrollment to the high school from each town each year, so those will change each year. That is spelled out in the regional agreement that we have. The second part of the question, I'm going to defer to Mr. Mulcarren.
Okay. Brad? Next person, please.
Oh, okay.
You already asked a question, thank you.
I had two.
You can come back.
Yeah, I have a quick question, which-
Brad, can you introduce yourself, please?
Brad Reed, Bolton Randall Road. I have a question related to this process, but not directly to this building. We found out last May at the annual town meeting that the school committee is running a benefits deficit of fifty million dollars, and I wanted, want to know how that will impact the tax rate in all the towns at this point, where I haven't heard a solution to solving that problem. I'm sure the teachers want to get their pensions and health benefits, but so far it has not been paid for.
Thank you for that question. I'm going to give this to Mr. Horash, because he is on the OPEB Advisory Committee, so I think he can speak to this. Hold on for a second.
Thank you, thanks for the question. It's a great question. I think what you're referring to is OPEB, which stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is what provides our former staff members' health insurance as they sort of work their way through the next phase of their life after service in the district. Currently, and I just want to make a clarification, this is not a deficit, it's not a debt, it is a liability, meaning that there's no bill outstanding at this point. It is a liability, and that liability changes based on market conditions, and it fluctuates from year to year. Currently, there is an OPEB Advisory Committee. Some of the members of that committee are here with us this evening, and the goal is to provide the district with a strategy on how to pay that liability off in the next year or in, over the course of the next several years. And it may be that the recommendation that will be proposed to the school committee this December will be to stay put, and at the current rate, we're only allocating about fifty thousand dollars per year. It may be that the recommendation is that we allocate more money, potentially gradually over the course of ten or twenty years, so that we can reach a point where we are able to pay it off over the course of the following thirty years. Of course, certainly what happens this evening is going to impact that recommendation. But again, this is not a debt, and this is not something that is, that we're obligated to pay right now. In fact, there are several scores of other districts in the Commonwealth that are in the exact same position as us. We just have to decide as a town and as a district how we want to go about paying off that liability. So I hope that answers your question.
Thanks, Mike. And I think it'd be fair to say that this expenditure on the building doesn't have anything to do with that, correct?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. Right here, please.
Julie Schechter, West Berlin Road. I noticed from the slideshow that one of the issues with the current building, while it has served us well and long, is that it's not repairable due to the method of construction that was used back in the sixties. I was wondering if that issue was taken into account in the current design?
I'm going to give this to Mr. Olson.
Yes, it's a very different type of structure than, modern building standards are very different than the building standards from the sixties, including building codes, structural regards to seismic. So as part of this project, we're meeting or exceeding the current building codes, and part of the approach of this project from a sustainability standard, but also about flexibility for the future of education, some of the challenges this current building faces with the masonry walls and not allowing flexibility of the classrooms, is really something that the design has, is inherent to the design to allow for future flexibility and to address any shortcomings that the building might have over the fifty-plus years of the life of the building.
May I do, just a small follow-up, please?
Sure.
So it is essentially more repairable than this current building is?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Over here, sir.
Scott Slater, one-twenty Meadow Road. My question is, can we go back on the screen to get the other shots of the choices that we would have had for the renovations versus the building? Oh, you can't, you can't just go back. Okay, well, I just wanted to say that we are living in some really crazy times. We all can agree on that, I think, globally, in this country as well. Who's to say what the valuations of the housing industry is going to be next year, the year after, five years from now? All your, all your estimations are based on current values. What if, what if the crash is? The housing market, I'm saying. Where's the tax base going to pick up the difference on that?
Is that a rhetorical question, or are you looking for an answer?
Well, it's, it's a question. A question is a question. A question is a question.
How long have you lived at Bolton?
Excuse me?
How long have you lived at Bolton? I've lived here 27 years. It hasn't crashed. That's my personal opinion. I'm just saying.
2008 wasn't a crash? Excuse me? The Fed on the verge of crashing now? The US government with all the people that they just let in? What makes you think the government's going to be solvent? What makes you think the state is going to be solvent?
Fair enough.
Where does MSBA get their funding from? And what guarantee do you have that you're going to be getting that money for this project?
Does anyone want to address that?
We have an answer, yes. Here.
So we can answer that question in part. Obviously, there could be global market conditions, national market conditions, that we have zero control over. I'm going to turn the microphone over in a second to Mr. Olson from KBA for more specifics. But within that construction cost of the $241.7 million, our escalations on materials and also contingencies in the project for variability and making sure that we do have some of those contingencies and escalations built in.
Yes, to build on that, as you develop any budget, even when you're working on your house, you develop a budget that you're confident that you will not go over budget with. And as Mr. Mulcaren mentioned, it is building in those contingencies. And so, and then to address the common question about where the MSBA, their funding, so MSBA, one penny of your sales tax goes to school construction within the state of Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So what that really means is, all this time, you've been paying for school construction around the state. And so this is a little bit of a turn to get your money back from your state sales tax as an opportunity in the grant program. When the, if the project does move forward and the district executes a project funding agreement with the MSBA, based on the figures you saw tonight, that will be a binding financial contract. The MSBA has their funding sources, and I can't speak specifically, but do that. But there is a, they do commit the money. They have their budgets. So it is not a solvent item with the MSBA as far as when they execute a project funding agreement.
Thank you. Over here.
Yeah, hi. I'm Lauren Sully, 147 Long Hill Road. I'm not sure the exact language to do this, but I'd like to make a motion or recommend a motion be made to take the vote, call for the vote. People here know what they're going to vote. And there's been many, many forums to discuss.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your sentiment. I think we don't have a tremendous number of people lined up here. So I'm going to see if there's anyone else who has a comment they'd like to make before we call the vote. But thank you. I don't think it'll be that long. We've got someone up top here. Are you unable? Excuse me? Well, I'm actually- Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I couldn't hear that.
Are we good now? All right. My name's Ronald Powelski, 45, Wickham Road, Bolton, Mass. I'm a 73-year-old resident that has lived in Bolton since 1984. Just a quick background, then I'll get to my question. Previous town involvement? School committee? Building committee for the Florence Sawyer School? Little league and soccer coach? Had two children that went through the school system. And while I'm an advocate for a robust school system, I don't want to see that at the expense of a senior population that is forced to leave town. And that is a significant problem in Bolton. Or they're never able to afford to retire. When I looked at the tax situation, this brings my taxes to over $12,000, representing a 17% increase with over $8,000 directly related to educational expenses. From a consumer advocate's standpoint, 25% of my social security benefit is going to go to pay for the school taxes. Currently, I've estimated that I've spent over $150,000 over the past 18-plus years with real no-return-on investment, which serves as a subsidy to the town Bolton residents as I have no intention of selling my home. So I don't care about property tax values, property values. A proposed solution, and the question that I have for you is, why can't we consider implementing a tax cap for seniors on future educational expenses similar to the state of Texas and other states? We are not unique in our situation. And based on my conversation with a number of seniors, they are obviously concerned with the significant impact that these taxes and the cost of the school will be. So why can't we create a win-win type situation? So that's my question.
The question is, why can we not create a limited tax situation for seniors? Or some sort of tax abatement for seniors?
Why can't we implement a tax cap for seniors?
I think that's more a question for the town than for the school. Do you want to address it? Yeah. Is there anyone in the town that wants to address that?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Don Lo.
Yes, Don Lo, Town Administrator. The reason we can't do that is it's counter to Massachusetts general laws. The tax rebates or tax breaks for seniors are established at the state level by the legislature. The town of Bolton currently offers the maximum for any of those. But there is no such ability to freeze taxes for any particular class of citizen, whether it's a senior citizen, retired vet, which has been proposed in other towns or anything like that. So the way to achieve that is to have our state representative and our state senator lobby for something like that. But currently, we're just unable to do so.
Thank you, Don. Is there anyone else who needs a microphone? Be happy to bring it to you. Or Bob?
Bob Romer, 185 Main Street. I have a Nuss and Bolts question from a project management perspective, having been one for a very long time in projects, many, many times the size of this one. First question is, at what percent design did you make your estimates? You should be very familiar with that term.
Current, I'm sorry. Currently, we're just completed schematic design. So that's the phase that we're at. Schematic design in an MSBA level is much higher. It's more like a design development level that you would see in the standard building practices industry. But because we have to account for so many items at this point, that even though we're at schematic design, the documents are more of a design development level.
Okay. And so what is your percent contingency based on that? And what is it based on?
There are various contingencies.
You must have an overall contingency, though, for the overall project, for the numbers you presented.
There's multiple contingencies. There's an owner's contingency, a construction contingency. So there's many line items. I'm just referencing a document that was publicly, made publicly available at our last school building committee meeting. But as far as an exact percentage, I couldn't do. I don't know.
Well, as a project manager and owner, I'd really be interested in that bottom line because, if I understand correctly, if that number is exceeded, your estimate is exceeded, the cost of that differential would be picked up by the taxpayers. So that number is a very important number.
Correct.
Okay. The question is, do we know what the design percentage is? Or range, or anything?
So there are, like I said, as I mentioned, there is a construction contingency, an owner's contingency, as well as a design contingency and an escalation.
All of these roll into that cost, though?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Last but not least, what is the contract type? Is this a fixed-price lump-sum contract, time and materials based on an estimate? And what is the implication of that contract type on overruns?
Yep. This is, the district has elected through review to go with a seam-at-risk path, the Chapter 149A under Mass. General Law, which is a guaranteed maximum price. So contingent upon this approval, a construction manager will be brought on board that will agree to build the building at a guaranteed maximum price based on the budget here. So the, that, the project would not have to go back for additional funding, if that's what you're asking.
So in essence, you have a very substantial contingency.
Bob? You address it to me?
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's it.
Thanks. Okay. Over here.
Hey, Jeremy de Blois, 132 Harvard Road. I'll make it quick, everybody, I swear. Just want to say, though, it's not a question. Great job by everybody here. Loved everything you presented. And yeah, somebody could say I'm biased because we have young kids that are going to be up and coming. I'm going to speak from what I experienced. I'm a military brat. My dad was Air Force, 21 years. And I went to a regional high school in New Jersey. And believe me when I say, that school was also outdated at the time. And hearing stories about kids having to run just to make class in time, not having enough lockers, sharing lockers. I understand there's a little theft problem. I understand all high schools have that problem. But sharing lockers, not even getting your own, having barely any time to get class to class? That's absurd. And being able to actually function wholly as a school where they actually thought about where we're placing all our classes and just where the library is going to be and where everything, how everything works together. It's a more secure school. And it's going to be for another 50 years. Think about this. This school was built in '61. And I know it's had some work since then. But I mean, like, look at it. $120,000 or $1 million, sorry. I see, I did it too. $120 million. And that's probably going to go up for base repair. That most likely will go up. I don't have numbers. I'm just going off of experience. That number will probably go up. That's base repairs. And it's going to compound over the next five, 10, 15 years. These problems are just going to keep compounding. And it's going to get worse. And it's going to get worse. And then it's going to be even more expensive to get that all addressed appropriately. When my kids go to school, when they reach high school, I don't want them going to classes wearing coats and gloves because we can't seem to afford to heat our classes properly. That's ridiculous. Nobody's going to learn with that kind of, you know, function. Nobody. Science has proven.
Thank you.
You learn when you're comfortable.
Okay.
Give the kids what they need, please.
Thank you very much. All right. We've got one more over here. David.
David Bossley, Laurel Road. Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
David has moved the question. I'm going to, before we move the question, I'm going to say, is everyone ready to vote?
Yes!
Then we don't need to vote on moving the question, okay? Thank you. All right. Let's vote. So I'm just going to state the obvious. A yes vote is voting in favor of committing Bolton to their share of funding this school. A no vote is opposed to that. So you know on your clicker, green is yes, red is no. Can we open the? Oh, and everyone, please, hit a button on your clicker just to reset it. Because they've all went to sleep. All right. Are we open? Thank you. And take as much time as you need. Got a couple more. Does anyone else need time to make their vote? Yes. Not working. Okay. We've got a, we need a clicker over here. Anyone else having a problem getting their vote counted? We're going to give you a new device. That's pretty exciting, only one, I got to say. We do have another article after this. Please stay for that. We'll do it quickly. And also, please, 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 leave your clickers here. We've got bags to collect them before you go out the door, all right? We'll try to have someone at that door over here at the desk where you came in. We don't want to lose any of these. They cost money. All right. Let's close the vote, please. The article passes with a simple majority. All right. Please, Article 3. To authorize the town election. Everyone, you do need to go and vote a week from today. If we don't, if we don't pass the vote, it doesn't count. So everyone needs to vote. But first, we need to authorize it. What is your pleasure? Move the article? The article's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the town election? Seeing none? Let's open that vote, please. Yes authorizes the town election for next week on Monday, right here. And then we have one final vote after we count this. It will do by voice, so please listen. Does anyone need any more time? All right. We have authorized the town election. That vote passes. Do I have a motion to close the meeting? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Please, drive safely. And thank you.